Mission we'd like to as well.
Second.
A motion to approve as presented.
Clayton, and I appreciate this opportunity to recognize him and I appreciate everything y'all do for the town of Clayton. Thank you.
Awesome.
I just want to say, I appreciate everything that y'all do for us and I look forward to growing my career with the town of Clayton. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you both. And next on the agenda is the retirement recognition of a longtime employee.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Rich Capola interim town manager. I have the pleasure but also the sadness to discuss the retirement of Dale Medlin, excuse me, Dale Medlin, our long-term electric systems director. Dale came to the town in 2004 from Progress Energy, now Duke Energy, for those that may not be aware. He started as a senior lineman with us and served in that position for several years before being promoted into the electric utilities director position in 2011. And his forty-four years in the electric field, his greatest accomplishment dedication and safety for both the town, the town, as well as all the folks that have worked for him over the years. And we wish him the best in his future endeavors. But just wanted to say thank you to Dale and give him a moment or two to hear reflect on his time in the town. Thanks.
So Rich read off a few accomplishments. I thought he told me to bring a book of all my accomplishments.
No one expects me to run anywhere, obviously. So, and there's nothing left to learn the hard way. So, I mean, there's perks, you know, to go with this retirement thing. I had a great experience working with the town of Clayton in the electric department. I've acquired a lot of friends and relationships that I'll cherish forever. And I mean that from the bottom of my heart. I try to give a hundred percent. Also, you know, all of us as human beings, we're really only as good as the people around us. I have had the pleasure of working with a great group of people with the electric department. Some of them are here tonight. And all the other departments in town, we had this unique ability to work together, pull all our resources when we needed it. And that's kind of how we survived, really. And here are just a few, I just want to acknowledge a few people that I owe a deep debt, a gratitude to help me get through this journey and have a successful career. Blake Mills, Bob Clifford, some of my contractors, Ed Thomas, Tony Pierce, all the past council members and president council members. Couldn't have done it without you. I know y'all might get some credit for how hard you work, but we really, the people that work here in town, we know the efforts y'all put in. We appreciate it. We couldn't do it without you. Last but not least, and I've been reaching a lot of our goals that we set throughout the year. I'll truly miss all of you and would definitely cherish the time I've had with you. Thanks. God bless all of you. Thank you.
Okay. And I said, well, Nancy, I'll just have to take you at your word for that. And it has turned out to be a true wonderful experience, but a complete and total asset to our hometown, to my hometown and to our town. And we can't thank you enough for what you've done for us. Now, I don't know how many in the public realize, but the value of your electrical system in a municipality is much like the value of your home. And the more you put into it and the more you upkeep it and the more that you nurture it and you expand it and you grow it, the greater it becomes in value. And we have been blessed in Clayton to have exceptional growth to be able to expand our utility systems all across town. And a large part of that is due to Dale Medlin. So Dale, I wish you the very best in your retirement. And you know, he's going to be at home a lot more. So I know you're kind, but you're not. There's balance in every relationship. I couldn't agree with you more. But we wish you the very best. And I'd like to present this to you. And it says, with our greatest appreciation, we hereby honor.
And I'm sorry, it's a public service and you have to deal with them being away at night, weekends, holidays. The power goes out on Christmas too sometimes and any other holidays.
I know it's hard to believe that I would do anything, but in doing it all, because our whole goal was, let's do it right. It's got to be classy and it's got to be done right. So that just gives you a little bit of a background there on where, how we got to here. But right now I want to show you. This is going to be, the first ones who wanted one was Atlas Starks. They're the ones who purchased the Barber Building. And they happen to know Clark. Clark, by the way, and I'm going to send you where you can go to his website because I don't think you understand who we have on this public art advisory board and who's doing this. Clark is, he was very strict in telling them, I know you want it, but you can't have it. You know, and he put his, you know, his job possibilities at, you know, not knowing where they might go, although I didn't think there'd be a problem. So they came up with, they loved this one. The face is just adding some humanity to it. The other is decoration. It doesn't represent anything that takes place in that restaurant, anything about that. But it's going to be absolute.
Before you get started, Patrick, Sarah, would you hand me my blue mask right there on that table? Because the mayor is feeling a little naked up here.
On the process that goes along with that. So the second piece is inspections and in terms of building materials. So we want to make sure that if anything wasn't.
Come off. Okay. So you've actually seen part of his work. And so we're pretty excited about that. And now with this. Thank you.
I just, on that, I'd add one more thing. I think we had a conversation today. I think he's done murals. I'm trying to remember the last one he was talking about, but he hasn't had to do any touch-up work. And he's got several that have been seventeen, eighteen years old and continue. So in terms of longevity and maintenance, it's something they are committed to, but something that based on the mediums he uses, I don't expect that there will be a need for that, which is fantastic because we want something to endure and be some.
And up next on our agenda is a special employee recognition.
Thank you for everything you've done for the town, the department, me.
We get to share the accomplishments of everybody with the town of Clayton. And so often, we think he's just a fire chief. Or in this case, he is the fire chief. And to know how well this town is represented, represented in regional, in state, federal participation in doing what they do so well and taking it to the next level for their entire professional organization.
Good evening, council, members of the public. My name is Aaron Pritchard. I am a planner two of the town's planning department. This is, I think, the second time I've been before you. The first was a long time ago, shortly after I began as a staff introduction. So it's good to be back and I'm sure I'll see you more in the future. Six, the star is where I placed the notice sign. So the general statutes is encouraging a range, housing types is important to ensure that you have a DVC. So when you make your decision, the UDC, I just want to remind you, states that council shall adopt a statement describing whether its action is consistent with the adopted plans and policies of the town and explaining why the council considers the action to be taken to be reasonable and in the public interest. So I had the idea of basically just leaving this slide up for your benefit so that when you are rendering your decision, depending on how, what you decide, you can just reference this if you like, and that should satisfy that requirement. So happy to answer any questions. And that's the end of my, Director Howell says no. I was not at the last council meeting. I apologize.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir. This has been noted as a public hearing. I'll now open the public hearing and anyone wish to speak on. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, like sign.
Recommend an action moving forward. In your packet, you should have the ordinance that we're looking to change. All right. So this question sort of starts with where our patrons live. And I want to give a little bit of a background to our discussion tonight. So in December, Councilman Thompson asked for me to look at getting at the $25 out of town fee, as things down and move forward from that. And just giving you sort of a frame of reference from how I look at it, I like to do research as I'm going into these presentations. And so as I was looking at where our town, our library, our card users there, who did not renew their cards after May thirty-first. And that goes also for, we still have a good number of people who live out towards Flowers, but you'll notice that as we get closer to, oop, hang on. As we get closer to this line here, we really see a smaller number, operations with their tax dollars and out of town residents do not. So when we get that $25 fee, we are getting some, some money back to help with the running of the library. And we've gotten about $16,000 a year over the past six years that we've gotten this, that we've had this fee in place. That number's going to be smaller this year. We've seen from COVID, just a drop in usage overall, back a lot of times we never see them again. And it really creates an us versus them mentality. Yes, people who live in the town of Clayton support our library, but we're more than just the town limits. We are an area and we know that. How many friends do you have that live in Flowers? How many friends do you have that live in Riverwood Golf Course? How many friends do you have that live in the ETJ or just right outside or towards Garner? How many wonderful board members do we have that are ETJ members? So we really hate that we're giving an us versus them staff time and morale. Our staff has this great script that they give people why they have to pay the out of town fee. Takes about five minutes for some of what we lose by not having those people as still being a part of our community and knowing that they are. We currently pay about sixty-three hundred plus the staff time and shipping and a lot of other internal.
It's a nuisance to our residents who have friends that, you know, for grant funding, other organisms.
Actually keep people from coming back. A lot of times if someone were. I think, you know, we want to be good stewards of our, of our funding and we want to get those grant dollars and we want to get the donations and we want it to be something where the whole community can come together.
Yes. And I would say without question that our library excels in taking their annual budget and making way more of it than most could. So congratulations to you and your staff for the wonderful fiscal responsibility that you utilize with our town library. Because, you know, I don't know, it's four hundred plus thousand a year in a budget for library for the town of Clayton. Amazing with grant. I wish every department was as amazing with grant funding. It's wonderful. And the charitable donations, which Clayton has always been very strong.
The first one is with the general fund. We're asking council to approve two positions. One is the fire equipment operator position at an annual salary of fifty thousand plus benefits. And the second one is a warehouse coordinator position at an annual salary of forty-five thousand dollars plus benefits. It's expected both of these positions will result in a more efficient and effective operations. I've been here thirteen years now. And during that time, we for the most probably only had one person in the warehouse. Difficult to operate a warehouse to, two new wastewater treatment plant operators. And those are needed to support the operation of the new Sam's Branch Water Reclamation Facility when it comes online. Both those positions are at forty-five thousand plus benefits. So I want to, all these, the bodies are fine, but yes, you will have to have multiple bodies to be able to use that system.
Hey, Mayor, Council, Rusty, I'm Street Park Superintendent. So the bodies we're getting with this purchase, we're purchasing a dump truck body, a dumpster body. We'll have a flat bed. There will be a.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you, Robert. Turn it over to the council for their discussion.
That's all, Chuck. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Up next is the ADA informational update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Dolores Hill, Deputy Town Manager. Thank you so much for having us here tonight to talk about a plan that has been quite a while in coming, that will be comprehensive and will lead the town forward in making some much-needed adjustments and modifications to several areas of our town. Section five oh four of the $150,000 for street right-of-way ADA curb ramp improvements and $50,000 for building retrofits. The ADA transition plans and prioritizations are going to be presented to you by Stuart Engineering this evening. This will help us to create both short and long-range programs and processes to complete this work. And the ADA transition plan does not have, we will be providing updates as we move along. And as the ADA coordinator for the town, I will be making reports back to you and working with, within the town to plan for and fund and implement.
Five-year period. So I'll talk briefly about the historical context and then I'll talk a little bit about what our roles and responsibilities were throughout this process. So per Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act, municipalities are required to have a plan in place to accommodate those who may use public facilities. Federal funding can be withheld unless there's a play, plan in place or in the works. So you guys have already checked that requirement. There's also various federal requirements that apply to areas in the public right-of-way as well as areas. The very first thing that we did was establish an ADA coordinator, a public notice in parks. And the third phase being data collection within the public right-of-way. So any curb ramps or hazards that we identified in our surveyed area. But essentially, it's an ongoing plan, living document, like I've mentioned. And really, you know, you'd be kind of taking that punch list, the maps, the tables that we've put together in this transition plan and over that five-year cycle, chipping away towards full ADA compliance. B seven, survey responses, which is easily one of the highest, if not the highest, out of the different municipalities that we've worked with. It's a great, you know, starting point. It was, it was definitely very informative to the plan and some of the recommendations that made it into the plan. But there is definitely a plugged-in community. And that's definitely a credit to Dolores and Nathaniel kind of getting the word out there with the survey and really kind of making sure that, you know, we got as many eyes on it as possible. Even cemeteries and essentially anything that is publicly owned or accessible. Public participation, I've touched on these three main, really speaking without getting into every single question, but really the, the key takeaways from public involvement were better accessibility to some of the gaps, where there's gaps in the sidewalk network. You know, the restrooms in some of the park and rec facilities are a little dated. So midterm priority projects are usually going to be in that one to three-year window with annual budgeting necessary. Those are going to be a little more substantial. So, you know, handrails for an access ramp, replacing a water fountain, grab bars in a restroom facility, just to name a few. And then the long-term priority projects are going to be, or your permanent improvements, three to five years or more. Like I mentioned earlier, costs either funded through the CIP or other sources. And those are going to be, you know, start to identify the priority process. And then additionally, the annual reviews and kind of the development of the CIP.
You know, not just legally, but morally is to make sure that we provide accessibility for every citizen. And they should have access to all of our facilities, all of our sidewalks, all of our bathrooms. And I think this is a good step towards showing that we're doing right by everybody.
Agree. Anyone else? Awesome. Thank you.
And with that, I just ask for council's approval to move.
Was donated to the town to construct the connection from Riverwood out to Covered Bridge. As part of that, the town took on a project and built that connection that's known as Peyton Drive, completed that in twenty twenty, I guess last year, twenty twenty, or the end of last, beginning of twenty-one into twenty twenty. As part of that, the town took that piece of property and actually went through a subdivision. So carved out that section of right-of-way and in doing so left two remnant pieces of property, one to the north and one to the south that was leftover from that right-of-way once Peyton Drive was constructed. To the north, this is just a picture of the subdivision there. You can see that there are some associated easements dealing with the slopes and drainage easements that were obtained on the, on the northern piece of property just to support the right-of-way. And then also, this is not zoomed in very well, but Duke Energy also has an existing easement for a feeder through the middle of the property. So the remnant piece of property is encumbered by several easements. The adjacent property owner to the north has indicated that they have interest in purchasing the remnant piece of property from the town. I was completely aware of all the encumbrances by an actual amount following the ten-day upset bid process. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Questions. Staff reports beginning, reports beginning with the, with the town manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Just basically three days of programming will be coming your way here in the next day or two. But if you have any other questions, please feel free to reach out in, in the meantime. Other than that, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Town attorney? Town clerk?
No reports. Thank you.
Under other staff, economic development.
Part of the important piece here is really pulling together across departments, information on how you tackle this thing in terms of coming here to do business. We, we did take a lot of examples from other towns that have done similar guides and you use kind of the best practices there. And frankly, have seen examples on pre-apps recently where we wish people had this guide because it probably would have made their life a little bit easier. So with that, I want to have Lydia run through this.
But it starts all the way from verifying zoning and land use to permits to utilities. Can get involved or learn more. And last page, short and sweet, implementation on how we'll be using the guide. It does currently live on the town's economic development page, just on the homepage right there for our department.
Have literally, you guys are investing in small businesses, just doing this work right here. Thank you. You guys are amazing.
I think this is good. I love it. I think it's outstanding. I think it can even grow a little bit more. Do we have, or do we have anything? Or are you looking to put anything in place that would solicit from people who use this, hey, what, you know, do you think there's some improvement or something else that we could add on to that? Or do you have some little space or asking for comments to come back on, you know, what would you like to see? Or, you know, just to, again, it, it's almost like a living, breathing document to where it can grow, where somebody has a new business can say, well, you know, hey, this is really good, but I would like to also see this.
Yeah, to add to what you're saying, this has already gone through all the different departments and we actually have the DDA advisory board take a look at it too. Many of them are business owners. So we got some of their feedback and certainly there's room for it to, to grow. It's targeted right now, as Patrick mentioned it, small businesses, which we deem as less than 500 employees with already existing buildings. But there's tons of ways to morph this guide into something that can represent and be helpful for, for many more people doing many different types of projects. And if you have anything to add.
Yeah, no, I'd say I think we want to certainly figure out a way to, you know, this is, can't be a static document.
Where this could have been perfect for them, for a business owner. I have a, you know, something simple, but they're, they're going back and forth and they're just, they're just not using it. I just don't want to see somebody hit. I don't want to see somebody get killed.
From north to south or south to north. So when we had Senator Rick Horn, Horner, yes. He was able to get some additional funding for his jurisdiction at the time. And that is where the funding came from for what we have there now. And it was very welcomed, very well received. And we've been dealing with for twenty years and it's, it's just getting, you know, nobody's listening. So it's falling on deaf ears, which for me is frustrating. Mr. Thompson?
I think it's a good opportunity for us to use our, our public information office, you know, especially that since the office has grown. Perhaps, you know, we can participate with them, get our public safety leadership from fire and police together and and maybe make some sort of a video or something that we can post on a YouTube channel to raise awareness. But something also that can be shown in the schools. They all have televisions in the classrooms and a means to deliver these things.
And, and ask for their input because sometimes they, they know what to word or what to say to make it kind of catchy. It might, might help, maybe not.
Yeah. Anything to help make it safer and communication, I'm all about it, but it just.
Really got us through with, with no hiccups. It was great for us.
It was great for us. Absolutely. Thank you for mentioning that. All right. I will entertain a motion to go into closed session after a 10-minute break. Second. Call in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries.